Eyes all set?
Well, that is the hope, Madam Chair.
Recording in progress.
All right, fingers crossed. Samantha, Caroline, do you need us to tell you what? Because we were mid-vote when you cut out.
Yes, Madam Chair.
So can I just recap the vote? Or do you need us to like repeat our vote?
Could we repeat it because of the cable situation? I'm not sure in terms of technology how that works between like what we present versus what's on cable. So if you could just redo the vote.
So you need us to redo the vote?
Yes, please.
Okay, so Mr. Stenberg, this is again, this is for 287 to 289 Beach Street. Mr. Collins, well, sorry, let me do roll call first and then we'll do that. Mr. Stenberg.
Present.
Mr. Valencia.
Present.
Ms. Bede Brasa.
Present.
Mr. Collins.
Present.
Mr. Aiken.
Present.
Ms. Panato.
Present.
Okay, all accounted for. So we're just repeating the vote that we just took for 287 Beach Street because 1010 went out in the middle of it. So if Mr. Collins, you want to, you know, repeat your motion and then we can proceed.
I will motion to approve with BPDA design review and no building code relief.
Okay, and who seconded?
Pro Leibit second.
Okay, so let's run through this, Mr. Stenberg.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Bede Brasa.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Aiken.
Yes.
Ms. Panato.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Thank you, everyone.
Madam Chair, at this point, we'll be going to the interpretation case that's scheduled for 1:00 p.m.
That was the interpretation case. Did you guys cut out that early?
Madam Chair, there's actually another one.
Oh, there is?
Yes.
Okay.
The plan is to do the interpretation request and then to ask for the 1 o'clock deferrals or withdrawals and then to go next.
What's the other case? Sorry.
And then you want me to say it right now or just to read it out?
Yeah, go ahead. I don't know which the other case is, so.
So it's the interpretation for 1 o'clock p.m., BOA 1602742, 123 to 125 Broad Street.
Okay, so we're going to proceed with this?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
So with that, just to repeat, if active for an interpretation case, all the cases scheduled for 1:00 p.m. Case BOA 1602742 with the address of 123 to 125 Broad Street. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, please explain the case to the board.
Yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Lenz with a business address of 245 Sumner Street, East Boston, behalf of petitioner. As indicated by staff, this is before the board for interpretation. We're not requesting zoning relief, but rather to determine whether or not the decision of the Inspection Service Department was correct in citing this project for G-Cod applicability. Very briefly, it's a pretty narrow issue, Madam Chair, but this project involves an as-of-right conversion of an existing six-story building located at 123, 125 Broad Street in downtown. The conversion is part of, for lack of a better term, it's an office-to-residential conversion based upon certainly the market and where it stands in downtown. And I know converting vacant office space into residential is a stated goal of the city and an important component of creating additional housing opportunities, especially in buildings like this. With respect to the project itself, as I said, this is an as-of-right change to the building. Each of the five levels above the ground will be converted to a residential use. Because of the lack of a window line, there's windows both front and back in each unit, these are all intended to be pretty much open concept loss in each level. The infrastructure of the building is pretty adaptable for this use and the proposed changes are really limited to a more cosmetic and very minor changes to, for example, HVAC, plumbing, and electrical. As the board is likely aware, G-Cod is applicable anytime you are within the G-Cod orderly district, provided that you meet certain criteria. And one of the most crucial elements of the G-Cod applicability is the level of rehabilitation. And the level of rehabilitation is defined right in Article 32 as to substantially rehabilitate, which is defined specifically as being more than 50% of the assessed value of the physical structure of the building. You don't take the assessed value of the property, but the structure alone. In this case, the, I believe the assessed value is around 4.4 million or so, just under, for the structure itself. And I provided the board for its record all of the data with respect to this. So from the assessor's record, which I believe may be on page six or seven, I just scrolled down, you can see that the assessed value for the physical structure is about $4.4 million. That would mean the threshold is somewhere around 2.2 million for renovations. And in this particular case, our renovations do not exceed about $700,000. And as a result, it's our position that the G-Cod threshold is not exceeded and therefore not applicable with respect to this particular proposal. We've indicated to the Inspection Service Department and provided the data regarding the extent of the cost for the renovations being, you know, roughly a third of the actual threshold. However, ISD has indicated that the actual estimate for permitting purposes is based upon a commissioner's bulletin, which I believe is on the next page. And that commissioner's bulletin would indicate that the cost of rehabilitation for a project like this would be about $235 a square foot. Our position is the commissioner's bulletin is certainly helpful guidance on determining the rightful cost of the permit. But for purposes of G-Cod interpretation, actual costs should trump anything that's in the bulletin, especially when you consider that the bulletin takes into account things like a full gut rehab of a building or physical improvements in the exterior or, you know, other substantial improvements in the infrastructure. That's not occurring in this particular case. So therefore, while we acknowledge the commissioner's bulletin as a tool to help calculate the proper cost of the permit, we do also point out that where actual cost is available, as in this case, and that as has been provided to Inspeccional Services, that that controls for purposes of determining G-Cod applicability. In our case, we are far below the threshold of roughly 2.2 million and therefore we should be exempt from the requirements and we are respectfully asking the board to reverse the decision of the ISD Commissioner with respect to G-Cod applicability and allow this project to proceed as a matter of right. I'm happy to answer any questions on the board.
Thank you, Mr. Lenz. Questions from the board?
So can you just explain again how much you're spending per unit on these, on this renovation?
Sure, it's about 125,000, Ms. Panato. And I do have the budget. I think if you scroll down, the budget should be there. Again, there is, you know, there's existing, as I said, existing infrastructure within the building currently. And that includes, you know, HVAC, electrical, plumbing, et cetera. It's some repositioning of the actual elements that you do have in the building. There is cosmetic, there's paint, there's some floor and where needed. There's decorative changes to the units, but certainly not the extent that would be applicable or result in triggering the actual G-Cod threshold in this case.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I think I'm not inclining to reversing a citation from ISD. I would like to recommend that we have legal counsel to provide their interpretation in order for myself to fully be able to provide a position.
We also have, Mark Joseph is also on the call from ISD, if that's helpful.
Yes, that would be helpful. Is Mr. Joseph on?
Is Mark, are you? No, I don't see him. I don't see him on.
He was in the hearing, Madam Chair. I'm going to go across the hall to see if they need assistance.
Oh, okay.
Is it possible for me to respond to Ms. Bede Brasa's comment?
Sure, while we wait, yes.
I respect, you know, having legal counsel review the question of interpretation. Certainly, that's what the board's brought. I will point out that this is, again, this is otherwise as-of-right project. There is work that is permitted to be started under a short form, but this really is somewhat of relatively time-sensitive matter because of, you know, the opportunity here to do the conversion and to try to complete that at a time of the matter. So I fully understand asking legal counsel, but this is, I think, a pretty cut and dry interpretation of Article 32, where 50% is pretty well-defined, I'm sorry, substantially rehabilitated is pretty well-defined in Article 32. And the amount of, or the expense here is well below that threshold.
Thank you. Other questions from the board?
Madam Chair, I am here with Mr. Joseph. You should be able to hear him now.
Okay, Mr. Joseph, we're hearing the 123 to 125 Broad Street case. If you would like to weigh in.
Yes, Madam Chair, good afternoon and thanks to board and Mr. Lenz, thank you for your intervention here. We have an application for this one here. It is a change of occupancy from a brewery and restaurant, beauty salon, and offices to restaurant on lower level and renovation to seven with no walls, finishes, kitchen bathrooms, and fire protections, fire alarms, all this. Also, there is a short form permit for $6 million that was pulled December 2023. And also, there is another short form permit that is pulled for $100,000. The construction for the renovation itself costs $4.7 million, while the asset value of the structure is about like 10% less than the renovation cost. It's $4.4 million. So Article 32 clearly states it's not about like what you are doing, it's for the cost of work. The app.
Sorry, did someone mute Mr. Joseph mid-sentence?
No, Madam Chair, we might be experiencing residual impacts. I can go check on this now.
Yes, I am. I am back here.
Okay, sorry, we lost you.
Yes, thank you very much. Sorry, Madam Chair. The applicability of Article 32 clearly state 50%, 32.4% of 50% of the asset value of the structure, they're going to clearly work on the value of the structure. That will enhance the value of the structure. Therefore, our plan examiner clearly is right by citing Article 32.4 of the zoning code because the cost of work is way more than 50%, as a matter of fact, more than 100% of the asset value of the structure itself.
So still, can you just explain what we're looking at though? Because here you're showing us something that says 16 million.
Yeah, that's kind of quoting what they're interpreting as the value.
Yeah, so I think.
What the city's, right?
The city's assessed value of the physical structure is 4.3 million. Therefore, just for simplicity, Article 32 threshold would be half of the physical value as of like 2024. So the cost of renovations would have to exceed 2.18 million in order for G-Cod to be applicable. As for the comments that Commissioner Joseph has just indicated, you know, we've supplied ISD with the actual scope of work, as we do with all building permits, and the cost that would go along with that scope of work. And it's clearly not 2.18 million. As to the short form that was pulled for $6 million, I believe, and I don't want to give the wrong name, but I believe that was adjusted by ISD. I don't think we've ever indicated $6 million in work for this property. It's just not even feasible for this scope of work. And lastly, with respect to the ground level, I believe that the indication was that that's going to be corn shell only. There's not a proposal at this time to make the renovations to the restaurant because I don't believe they have a user for that space. So this really deals with the five upper levels, the conversion from the office to residential. And, you know, we would much prefer to have multiple units in those, for each of those floors and certainly that cost would be higher. But because of the orientation of the building, again, with windows only front and back, we're pretty limited on what we can do for this site. And that's why we're only proposing the residential units that we are.
I can additionally say something about that. But the cost of work that your contractor just put in here on these applications is $4.7 million. But you keep referring to 2. something, but it's $4.7 million. That's what we have on record here. And the renovation will be for two, from the first to all the way up to seven floors with no walls, kitchen bathrooms. It's not only MEP, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing that they're going to do. They're going to do a lot of work on this building, Mr. Lenz. So I believe our plan examiner is right.
I think I heard enough in regards to seeing the two positions to make a decision. Thank you so much.
All right, any other questions from the board? If not, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I would propose a motion to defer to allow the applicant to provide clear documentation to Commissioner Joseph in terms of the value of the work that's being done on the building.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Brasa?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Can we be, Madam Chair?
We need a date, correct?
Yes.
Madam Chair, the date, the next date would be September 24th, Madam Chair.
Mr. Lenz?
Works for me.
Okay, we'll see you then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we'll return to the rediscussions, going to report on the.
Going to call deferrals and withdrawals, Madam Chair.
If anyone has any withdrawals over deferrals or the cases scheduled for 1:00?
Mr. Stenberg, it's Attorney Lenz, 9 Geneva Street, last one on the agenda, I believe, for 1:00 p.m.
So that would be for case BOA 1563599, the address of 9 Geneva Street. Would you go ahead and explain?
Try one. For the record, Richard Lenz, business address of 245 Sumner Street, East Boston, on behalf of petitioner. With respect to 9 Geneva Street, we are awaiting one update to our Boston Water and Sewer Plan for G-Cod. We do have our no harm letter, however, the modification to the plan was not back in time. We've spoken to the board as well as ISD legal regarding this and as well as Ground Order Trust and Mr. Semenelli. And I believe we have a date that we were holding for August 27th, if that's correct.
That is correct, Madam Chair.
August 27th, so we're requesting deferrals that date, which should give us sufficient time to finalize that update for the Boston Water and Sewer Plan.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion?
Motion to defer until August 27th, 2024?
That comes.
Okay, Mr. Stenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Brasa?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you very much for your great presentation.
So returning to the, oh, I believe there's none. But this one hand, right?
Well, that's Jessica, so I don't know.
Are there any more requests for deferrals or withdrawals?
Not sure why I'm answering, but.
Dan? Or Nadalyn, do you have a request for a deferral?
Is anyone else on the? Go ahead.
Yes, so good afternoon, Madam Chair, here the board. So I went to the community meeting, so they wanted to send some stuff on the job.
What project are you referring to? Can you give us the address?
Sorry, any particular story, please, Madam Chair.
Okay, let Mr. Stenberg read that into the record.
Madam Chair, that's with the 1130 section for the record.
Okay.
I'm sorry, where was the address again?
86 Astoria Street.
Hi. Companion cases?
Towards the end of the 1130s.
So that would be for case, two companion cases. Case BOA 1538686 with the address of 86 Astoria Street. And along that way, and also with that, BOA 1538740, also with the address of 86 Astoria Street. Would you identify yourself and please apply to the board?
Hi, my name is LaFlin Franklin. So I went to the community meeting and they wanted to send some stuff on the job and come back in September, so we're going to give a date for October.
Thank you. Samantha?
Madam Chair, we have either October 8th or October 29th.
Ma'am, any preference?
October 29th, please.
Okay, may I have a motion?
Motion to defer until October 29th.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Brasa?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. See you then.
Thank you.
And then we have Dan.
Hi Dan, I sent a request to unmute you. Can you hear us?
Dan, are you looking to defer a case?
Just have to request to unmute and leave the chair, I'm not sure.
Madam Chair, if you'd like, we can move on.
Yeah, let's move on. Thanks.
So with that, going back to the rediscussions, the level thirty, we have case B O A one five seven two zero five six with the address of ninety-one Rad Cliff Road. If the applicant and or their representative is present, would they please explain the case to the board?
Yes, Mr. Stemberg, thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Derek Small of a business address of fifty-one Dodson Road. Um, I believe we have the architect Niall Sutton on the line as well. Um, and we're here today, um, seeking relief to erect a two-family dwelling on a vacant lot. The zoning sub-district here is a two F five thousand and our lot size is approximately thirty-two hundred square feet. The zoning violations are as follows. Um, lot width requirement is fifty feet, we have thirty-five feet. The F A R requirement is zero point five, we are proposing one point one. Uh, front yard setback was a modal setback at uh requirement is twenty, but the modal on that side of the street is ten feet. Side yard setback requirement is ten, we have five on one and eleven six on the other. That side being the side with the driveway. And the rear yard setback requirement is thirty feet and we are approximately twenty-seven feet. Madam Chair, the units, unit one will consist of two beds, two and a half baths and is approximately fourteen hundred square feet. And unit two is two beds, two and a half baths at approximately fifteen hundred square feet. Um, the units are such that the basement is being uh converted into dining area and living area. And on that first floor unit, the bedrooms uh will be on the first level. Um, I'll stop there to entertain any questions that the board may hold, either Niles or I. And then there are pictures in the file that show um of the two families on on the street. Again, that's a two-family, that's a three-family across the street beat as well. Um, I know there was some um concern with regard to to there being no two families on the street, but the the neighborhood and the street consists of one, twos, and threes. And so those pictures were added to the file just to illustrate that um that this isn't setting precedent that there are other two and three uh families on the street.
All right, thank you. Questions from the board?
Uh, is there a usable open space violation?
There is an open space violation. I I apologize, uh, Ms. Panado. The open space um requirement is uh seventeen fifty and we are at eight ninety. Per unit.
Other questions from the board?
What's your, what's your um, what's your uh uh basement floor level to your sill in the bed, in the bedroom? What's the height?
Seven six.
No, no, the not the height of the uh floor to ceiling.
Oh, the sill level.
The window sill, yep, because I don't see that you have a.
I believe it's fifty-four. I don't know, Niles, are you on? Can you verify that?
Yeah, I think that would not be by code. You need to, you need forty-four. So I'll, that's okay. I'll just make sure that you're not violate, that you don't um violate building code.
Yes, we could, we could add a proviso for that.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Can I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, Cecily Graham with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. O N S hosted in a butters meeting for the applicant on September eighteenth of two thousand twenty-three. They met with the Roseberry Ruskindale Road Neighborhood Association in October of two thousand twenty-three with my predecessor. At this meeting, there were no, there were concerns regarding the change uh from one family, uh, the current one family to a two-family structure. Uh, concerns with more cars and parking concerns. The applicant mentioned that there would be enough parking created for uh the cars on the property in the back of the property. Um, the civic was not fully confident in that response and voted to oppose. At this time, our office would like to defer to the chairwoman's judgment. Thank you.
Thank you.
You looking at good testimony, Rick? You're hearing no one else? I have no additional reasons.
Madam Chair, may I respond to that? We we are providing two parking spaces in the rear of the property um at this time.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? May I have a motion?
There we go.
Oh, I'm sorry, are you trying to speak, Rick, on this case?
Hello?
Are you trying to speak on this case, Rick?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with a proviso that there be no building code relief granted.
Is there a second?
Go.
Okay, Mr. Stemberg? Mr. Stemberg? You're on mute. Okay, I'm, okay, I'm gonna get another power outage. Uh, yeah, power is out again. Sorry, Mr. Small. Uh, looks like we will need another break. Uh, we'll call it uh fifteen minutes for now and uh let's see what happens. Sorry about that, Mr. Small.
That's okay, that's all right. These things happen.
We'll be back.
Okay, thank you Samantha. And just as a point of reference, I do live in the area and apparently there's like a whole big block that's down, no power. So, roll call, Mr. Stenbridge.
Present.
Mr. Valencia.
Present.
Ms. Better Braza.
Present.
Mr. Collins.
Present.
Mr. Aiken.
Present.
Ms. Panato.
Present.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Small, I now can't recall where we were in your presentation, so just refresh us.
I think we were voting.
Yes, a motion was made to approve with no building code relief.
Okay, well, let's get to that part again then. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I would like to throw a motion of approval with a proviso that there be no building code relief granted.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yeah.
Ms. Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Better Braza.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Aiken.
Yes.
Ms. Panato.
Yes.
Okay, the chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you Madam Chair, members of the board, have a good day, good luck with the issues.
I know, thank you for everyone's patience, again, there's been power outages in this area that has been affecting ISD, so sorry about that, please proceed.
With that, we'll move on to the next basis, we're going to find the oldest one. We have, if I get back to the right page, we have three companion cases next. Case BOA 1601598 with the address of 142 Erie Street. Along with that, we have case BOA 1601605 with the address of 154 Erie Street. Then we have case BOA 1601654 with the address of 56 Glenway Street. These are all projects in conjunction with the mayor's office of housing. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, would they please explain the cases to the board?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Canan Yasin, I am representing the developer ASIDON, I'm the director of housing development as well as financing. So this project itself, this presentation is ASIDON's first presentation, so we just wanted to introduce ourselves a little more formally. So just to slide down to the agenda, we have a few slides before we get into the details of our project. So the first slide, we'd like to discuss about the team itself, the members of our team, maybe just a few moments, discuss about ASIDON's program overall, and then we can get into the nitty gritty and discuss the presentation, so. If you could slide over to the next slide. So the development team we have is myself, Canan Yasin, we have our CEO and founder, Fadh Hussain, we also have one of our project coordinators, Rob Lefara, who's here in attendance, and then we also have Saed Al-Deqadz, which is our director of development. That's the ASIDON team itself, and then from our design side, we have Andres Pernal from AGC, I mean JGE, he's our design principal, and then we also have their design intern, Joseph Soul. And then we have Matt Henze, who is our consultant, as well as the project manager for our presentation, and so as our project overall, and then we have Joseph Weaver from Klein-Hornig, and their representative, I think he's here, president of Peter Lubashane. We can skip over to the next slide. So just a little bit about ASIDON itself, ASIDON happens to be a nonprofit CDC. You know what makes our organization so great is that we offer an array of different services to the community overall. A few things to discuss in particular that I'd like to highlight is our small business development, we do offer a micro loan lending program that provides small technical assistance to up and coming potential business owners that got our community members in the areas of Boston. We also have a great and beautiful youth program that I came up through myself, it's called Youth in Charge. We just recently in 2023 took management of a shelter out in Cambridge, and then we also have a health equity department that was in response to COVID-19 and that virus that went around. And then last but not least, we just began our affordable housing department, which I became the director of, and this is our first project overall. So it's a great way of us to connect that full wraparound service that I discussed initially, and ASIDON's vision of trying to bring so many different avenues and venues to each household in the city of Boston. I'd like to pass it over to my colleague, Matt, who will break down the actual project itself, and he'll start off by talking about the household size and stuff, so. You can skip over to him, start.
Yep, thank you Canan, and good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, I know you've had a long day, so we'll try to keep it moving here. Current unit mix, basically, this is nine units on three sites, nice mix of ones, twos, and threes. Again, as Canan referred to, and as was noted by Mr. Stenbridge, sorry, forgetting the name, but this is a mayor's office of housing-supported and funded project. Members of the board may be familiar with the specific program, it's Welcome Home Boston, Canan might have mentioned that, but, so the land and funding is coming from MOH. And we're seeking other public funding for mass housing, and we have a great team, as noted, and ready to roll on this, but. Nine units in three buildings at the corner of Glenway and Erie, and there is five parking spaces, that does not, you know, meet a, that's obviously a violation in terms of ratio, but feeling that it's the right mix. It will move from there to the next slide for ability, again, this is all, this is fully affordable, fully restricted, five units, eight percent AMI, four units at a hundred percent AMI. You can see the sale prices there, that's public information, that's not flexible, that, you know, comes from the program from MOH. And then finally, we have purchase prices on the next slide. Thank you. And you can see for yourselves, in the interest of time, I won't read off the numbers, but these prices are way below market, and there's a super high demand across the board for our project and all of the Welcome Home Boston projects. So we're very excited to be a part of that moving forward. Okay, without further ado, starting with the next slide, we're going to pass our baton over to our primary architect and designer, Andres Pernal of Jonathan Garland Enterprises. Andres, you're on, please.
All right, thanks Matt. Madam Chair, members of the board, next slide, please.
And then we also have a health equity department that was in response to COVID-19 and that virus that went around. And then last but not least, we just began our affordable housing department, which I became the Director of. And this is our first project overall. So it's a great way of us to connect that full wraparound service that I discussed initially and ASIDON's vision of trying to bring so many different avenues and venues to each household in the city of Boston. I'd like to pass it over to my colleague, Matt, who will break down the actual project itself. And he'll start off by talking about the household size and stuff, so you can skip over.
Thank you, Canaan. Yep, thank you, Canaan, and good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. I know you've had a long day, so we'll try to keep it moving here. Current unit mix, basically, this is nine units on three sites. Nice mix of ones, twos, and threes. Again, as Canaan referred to and as was noted by Mr. Stenbridge, sorry, forgetting the name, but this is a Mayor's Office of Housing-supported and funded project. Members of the board may be familiar with the specific program, it's Welcome Home Boston. Canaan might have mentioned that, but so the land and funding is coming from MOH. And we're seeking other public funding for mass housing. And we have a great team, as noted, and ready to roll on this. But nine units in three buildings at the corner of Glenway and Erie. And there is five parking spaces. That does not, you know, meet a... That's obviously a violation in terms of ratio, but feeling that it's the right mix. It will move from there to the next slide for ability. Again, this is all, this is fully affordable, fully restricted, five units, 8% AMI, four units at 100% AMI. You can see the sale prices there, that's public information, that's not flexible, that, you know, comes from the program from MOH. And then finally, we have purchase prices on the next slide. Thank you. And you can see for yourselves, in the interest of time, I won't read off the numbers, but these prices are way below market. And there's a super high demand across the board for our project and all of the Welcome Home Boston projects. So we're very excited to be a part of that moving forward. Okay, without further ado, starting with the next slide, we're going to pass our baton over to our primary architect and designer, Andres Pernal of Jonathan Garland Enterprises. Andres, you're on, please.
All right, thanks, Matt. Madam Chair and members of the board, next slide, please. Just going to start with a zoning chart here. We are located in the Greater Matapan in the 3F5000. We were cited for eight violations. Maybe, I'm not sure if I necessarily need to go into all of them, but they're sort of, they're described right here. There's also, just so folks know, there are two columns in here, mostly because we submitted a set and then working with the Mayor's Office of Housing, there was a development, a little bit of a change which made us update our drawings, so that's why there is sort of two different columns. And there were some slight changes, but the overall message is that we stayed within the same sort of relief or our request stayed the same or was minimized in terms of setbacks and so forth. Next slide, please. So let me just start to explain the project as quickly as I can. We, this is the first lot, there are two lots. This is the lot that is at the corner of Erie and Glenway. Glenway is going left to right on the page and Erie is up and down to the left. This lot would have two buildings. The one to the right is a three-unit building essentially, so there would be three units that have three bedrooms each. And the building on the left would be essentially a stack of one bedrooms. So for this lot, we're looking at six units altogether. First floor units would be fully accessible. And then we're looking also at having four parking spaces for the six units. Out of those four parking spaces, of course, we also have one fully accessible parking space and a direct accessible route to the entry. Both buildings are what I would call the single egress building, so there is one egress, but it will be, there will be fully sprinkled and the walls will be fire rated. Another item to note is that the trees that you see along Erie Street and Glenway, those are actually existing trees and that has been sort of an important piece of this project from the beginning. So a lot of what happened with the placement of the buildings was related to maximizing the ability to keep trees as well as making sure that we provided as much parking as we could for this six units of homeownership. Next slide, please. So very quickly, just trying to show the elevation. This would be what the buildings would look like from Glenway. To the right is a three-bedroom stack and to the left is the one-bedroom stack. They are trying to work with the vernacular and they would sort of, they have pitch roofs, lap siding and sort of feel like a two and a half stories, although there will be three stories. Next slide. And this would be the elevation from the Erie side, so this would be that one-bedroom stack that would be facing Erie. So one street address would be on Erie, the other street address would be on Glenway. All right, next slide, please. And this is a rendered view of how both buildings would look from Glenway. So now I'm going to move to the other site, which is primarily, it's only facing Erie Street and is essentially, you know, just about 40 feet away from this site. If you don't mind going to the next slide, please. Similar to the Glenway site, here we are in the Greater Matapan 3F5000. In this case, we are, it's one site where we're proposing to place one building, essentially a three-family, triple-decker, maybe we'll. Very similar, two columns in here because we had a resubmission based on some feedback that we received from the Mayor's Office of Housing. And we had one, two, three, four, five, six cited violations from ISD. Next slide, please. This is the site plan, Erie Street going up and down on the page to the left. The other side, the Glenway side, would be essentially page, to the bottom of this page and about 40 feet away, as I mentioned. In this case, we have two bedroom units that would be stacked, three of them. Again, first floor would be fully accessible with one egress there. In this case, we were providing only one parking space. Next slide, please. And this is the elevation looking from Erie Street. Again, this is working mostly with the vernacular of the neighborhood. It's feeling like as a three-family unit, building. And one thing that I failed to mention before too, if you can go to the next slide, since I'm trying to move quickly to this, is that of course, those buildings would be up to the current code and would be following the most stringent sort of energy performance standards that are sort of very related, closely related to passive house. And I am going to pass it on to, I think it's, back to Canaan?
Correct.
We could go on to the next slide, please. Yeah, so we have selected our construction team, we've selected E-Rise Builders. They are well-versed and well-experienced in the neighborhood of Boston, especially in the Dorchester area. They have some similar projects in the area on TROL and wear projects as well. And they also have a project I didn't mention here, but it's on Magnolia Street, that are pretty similar to our project itself. So they are very experienced, they are a minority-based business, so it'd be great to have them as our construction team, so. And moving on to the last slide, just for the sake of time. Yeah, so this is just talking a little bit about our vision as a whole, ASIDON. I know we're pressed for time, so I think we could wrap up here. I just wanted to say that we are glad to be here in attendance with you guys today. Hopefully, this is the first of our many more potential developments and we are honored to be here presenting in front of the ZBA. Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I may just insert, we do have strong support from the primary civic group in the neighborhood. It's the Erie Ellington Brookley Neighborhood Partnership. And we have submitted a letter of support to the board.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
Yes, do you have any priorities for first-time homebuyers or first-generation buyers based on the community that ASIDON serves?
Sorry, I didn't hear you. Can you say that one more time?
Yes, I was asking if you have any priorities for first-time homebuyers or first generations homebuyers.
So for this particular project, it is part of the Welcome Home project. And I think that the selection of the homeowners, potential homeowners, will go through a lottery process itself. So ASIDON is not in any control of when it's becoming the owners of the home. But us as an organization, we do have a first-time homebuyer program as well too. We do provide technical assistance in terms of getting people those opportunities to have that, the knowledge as well as the skillset to potentially purchase to own homes, so that's what we can offer. But in terms of this particular project itself, it is out of our hands.
And I will add, Mr. Valencia, yeah, it certainly is first-time homebuyer, typical MOH, you know, city of Boston residency preference. I believe it's a 70% weighted preference in the lottery system. I do know what you're referring to with the designation of first-generation homebuyer. I have noticed that on other projects like Stonely Brookly and Jamaica Plain, for example. And we will follow up and ask the MOH team. As Canaan said, it's, they're in the driver's seat on homebuyer selection, but we'll certainly raise that. It seems like to me that the first-generation designation is a good idea.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, I didn't see a submitted survey plot plan for 56 Glenway, but we probably have it in there.
It is in there, I think, yes, it is in there. I know, and we're happy to send that if for some reason it's, you know, didn't make.
I saw it in the other drawings, but just wanted to make note of that, okay.
Yeah, they are submitted to ISD for sure, we're just glad to put it in the presentation.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions from the board? May I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, we'd like to defer to the board, as you heard from the proponent. They went through a Mayor's Office of Housing-led community process that involved public meetings as well as meeting with the local civic group. The Erie Ellington and Brinsley Partnership Neighborhood Association was supportive of this proposal. Without, defer to the board at this time, thank you.
Good afternoon, members of the board, Madam Chair. I'm Abdullah Beckett from Council of Rye WRL's office, District 4 City Councilor, and for 142 Erie Street. Having support from Erie Ellington Civic, with no letters of opposition, the councilor would like to go on record in support of this project, thank you.
Thank you.
Antonio, Mayor's Office of Housing?
Yes. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Antonio Leish, I am a Senior Housing Development Officer within the Mayor's Office of Housing. This project involves the disposition of city-owned land associated with the Welcome Home Boston Program, which is an initiative to develop affordable homeownership in the city of Boston. MOH has been working with ASIDON since the tentative designation for these sites. And the project has gone through, as mentioned, an extensive community process. And as a result, has the full support of the Mayor's Office of Housing, thank you.
Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Can we just hear from Bob D'Amico? I see a note in the chat that he sees sort of an instance of front yard parking on one of the renderings.
Oh, sorry, missed that. Mr. D'Amico?
Madam Chair and members of the board, Bob D'Amico, BTD. One of the drawings shows front yard parking. And I only approved the four spaces that were in the back. I don't know where the front yard parking comes from, but if it is requested, I would like to work it in opposition to that front yard space. Thank you.
Would the applicant like to respond?
Can I respond to that?
Yes, please.
So there, one of the, so there are two sites, on the Glenway side, the parking's in the back, so we're looking at one curb cut. So if the rendering is showing that...
I think he's referring to 142 Erie Street.
Correct.
Just to give some reference to what drawings he's referring to.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, it's 142 Erie Street, the one that I... Yeah, the one that... So if you can just comment on whether that's your intention to put parking as a front yard, which would be a zoning violation, or is your intention to go back?
No, it is our intention to have it parking in the front yard, on the side of, it's, yeah, it is within the property and it's to the side of the building, but it would be, I guess, partly in the front yard.
Okay.
And I will add, partly driven by accessibility requirements, we will need to have an MAAB Group 2 unit there on the first floor, which would lead one to say, well, a van accessible spot would be important there. I will say, at 10,000 feet, you know, Mr. D'Amico, we do intend to make a formal presentation to BTD. We've been preparing to do that in collaboration and concurrents with submitting to Public Works and the Parlo Pal, the agency. So we're preparing to do that, apologies, we hadn't reached out to you yet for your consultation, but yeah, at the moment, this is our preferred approach.
Thank you.
What's your side yard, what's your side yard dimension on the opposite side? Not where the work cut is.
On the opposite side?
Yeah.
Let me see, one second.
I'm trying to pull it up, I don't see the dimension.
Yeah, I'm trying to go to the actual plot line.
Yeah, the surveyor has, six foot seven?
Six foot seven, that sounds about right.
So if you were to potentially reduce that to five feet, you're already requesting a side yard setback relief, my understanding, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, so if you were to shrink it to five feet, you would gain more space on the other side where you have it at seven foot one at the most pinch point. And you could avoid the front yard parking, is that right, Bob D'Amico? I'm sure that...
Yes, that is correct.
Correct, I think it would be favorable. So that's something that I can put forward as a proviso. Jeff?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Better Braza. I'd like to suggest that if the board were to approve this, that it goes through BPD Plant and Heating Department review as well. We've had discussions with MOH and usually we don't like to get involved with the MOH process, but they've asked us to actually take a look and do work, design review on their projects.
Okay.
So if the board sees fit to approve this, we can work with your concerns through the design review process.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Here and none, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward motion of approval for all projects that has been read. But I do want to put a proviso for 142 Erie Street to not have front yard parking and to undergo a design review with BT, Boston Plant and Department, as Jeffrey is recommending.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes, this is a great project, I think the parking configuration can be improved, and I vote yes.
Ms. Better Braza?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Also, moving forward, I'd like to ask applicants to try to keep your presentations as brief as possible because in the event 1010 Mass Am, the power goes out again, we're forced to evacuate the building. So just, if you can, please keep it brief, thank you.
Thank you, there, I was standing up. We'll move on to case BOA 1535953 with the address of 42 New Market Square. If the applicant and/or their, this is a canvas case, and if the applicant and/or their representative is present, would they please explain?
Good afternoon, my name is Ben Odepin and I'm co-owner of MJ To Home LLC located on 42 Market Square. We are 100% minority-owned and social equity participant. We have support from the community, city councilor, and surrounding business. The premise is restricted to authorized employee with no customer access to the facility. Only employees allowed, authorized employees allowed to the premise. Our violation was onsite parking not specified in drawing. We resubmitted revised drawing with surveyor, marking, parking location. ISD has accepted our revised drawing and we are looking for approval to move forward since this project is now over two years old. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Here and none, can I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office had to defer to the judgment of this board, some background information, the community process. ONS hosted a public meeting regarding this proposal, there were no concerns raised. They went on to connect with the New Market Business Association, which is active in this area, and secured their support, I believe. I'm unaware of any concerns at this time, and with that, we'd like to defer to the board, thank you.
Madam Chair, we have no raised hands at the moment. Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Now make a motion to approve with, yes, just approval.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Better Braza?
Yes.
Mr. Collins? Are you unmute, Mr. Collins?
I am, yes, I approve.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries, good luck.
Thank you, and have a good day.
Next, we have case BOA 1576262 with the address of 14 Clermont. with the address of 14 Claremont Park. The applicant and/or their representative is present, would they please explain to the Board?
Hi, can you raise your hand if you're on for this proposal? A few hands raised. The Holland Companies, is that you?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
Yes, I, my name is Justin.
You speak up, I think you're probably in a room with a lot of people.
Justin. These are my companies. This is a proposal to construct a roof deck. If you go to page 8102, that will show the roof deck. I think it's like page 5. Just keep going down. So, it's a proposal to construct a roof deck on top of building. It is simply that there's a violation for the building code, which requires a full door headhouse for the roof deck. However, the South End prohibits that, so to get around that, we install our typical hatch to access the roof deck. That's all that we're calling for. This proposal is to install the roof deck and roof hatch. And this is something that happened, this is a typical violation on almost any project in the South End for roof deck itself.
Thank you. So, I may be missing something. We've gotten a lot of comments from direct abutters, commenting on decrease in light and increasing shadows, airflow, you know, bump outs. Can you just clarify, is this an existing roof deck? It's the only thing you're doing, the hatch versus, you know, the headhouse? Or is there other work that we're missing?
There is a permit for, there's a building permit that is already approved for the construction renovation of the building, the single-family building. So, we have the permit, we've gone to historical, we have that approval. The only violation that we currently have, which is the last one remaining, which is for this roof deck.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's a building code violation in regards to the amount of egress.
Thank you. Other questions or comments from the Board? Here and none, can I have public testimony?
Hello, Madam Chair, this is Chris Breen from the Office of Neighborhood Services. I would just like to state that the applicant has completed their community process. They have attended two of Butter's meetings, one in March and one as recently as last night, hosted by our office. The first of which was lightly attended, the second of which was heavily attended. They also attended the Claremont Neighborhood Association meeting back in April. And they also have met, as they stated, with the Landmarks Commission twice. But it should be noted, and this has come up in most recent Abutter's meeting, that the Abutters are contending that the adjacent Claremont Street is miscorrectly identified in the city street book as private, when it should be considered state-owned slash public. And if so, it would give the SELDC purview overchanges to the rear roof deck, excuse me, the rear roof cornice, that it currently does not have. That's just something that the Abutters currently believe. For the aspects within Landmarks discretion and purview, the SELDC did make approvals for the deck and the front facade windows, window wells at an April 2 public hearing. Also, in this later's Abutter's meeting, I just wanted to state that there was significant Abutter opposition for the project and its current design, with neighbors concerned about potential decrease in property value as a result of the new rear extension blocking sunlight. Also, our office heard requests for a shadow study and a 3D model to be made that helps the residents better understand the impacts of the build-out. That's heard, that was heard from residents and elected officials. But with that, our office defers the judgment of the Board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, may I speak?
You speak, are you an Abutter?
I am. Mr. Holland, Joe Holland, the owner of Holland Construction.
Okay, so we're in public comment right now, so let's go through that, and then the applicant, you'll have another, you'll have an opportunity to respond. Mr. Seminelli?
Yes, Madam Chair, Mr. Board, good afternoon. Christian Seminelli, Bosco Rowan Trust, and we have both G-Cod letters from the applicant.
Are you running through the raised hands, Jessica? Okay, District 7?
Hello, my name is Angie. I am the Director of Operations and Projects for Councilor Anderson's office in the District 7 office. Our office has been working closely with the Abutters to understand their concerns regarding 14 Claremont Park. I understand that today's vote specifically deals with the roof hatch, but our office feels it is important to raise the concern over the community process thus far. Yesterday's Abutter's meeting was the second to be held after the initial meeting saw poor attendance, with many residents being caught off guard by its happening. Fewer than five people attended the initial meeting. During the second Abutter's meeting, residents asked for renderings of the impact the rear extension would have, but was not able to view one before today's meeting. There has been inconsistent communication with residents regarding construction times and etiquette, with construction equipment being left in a way that poses security risks to tenants and upper floors. While we acknowledge the neighborhood's biggest pain point, the rear extension is as of right. Given the overwhelming opposition to this development, our office would like to go on record in opposition. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Are there other raised hands?
James Bennigan?
Can we keep going?
Yeah, we can keep going. Stuart Worrell?
Do we need to unmute these folks, or can they unmute themselves?
That's what we're looking at right now. Is Jessica online?
Don't see her.
I'm back on, I was having some connectivity issues, yep, but I'm back. I can get these folks unmuted, one second. Please, zone user one, I'm looking at, it's unmuted. We'll go to James from Northeastern, sent a request to unmute you. James? You're unmuted?
Ah, okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
As the commercial says. Thank you for the opportunity to offer testimony, and I appreciate how long everybody's day is going. So, I'm James Bennigan, I'm a direct abutter at 16 Claremont Park, and I know that there's been an overwhelming amount of written testimony submitted. So, to be respectful of people's time, I'd like to summarize some of the issues of opposition, but request that the committee review the full written testimony before sort of rendering any sort of decision. I strongly support the denial or deferral decision requested by the City Councilor, Tanya Fernandez-Anderson, State Representative John Moran, who I believe is on the call, the Claremont Neighborhood Association, and others. And rationale is there are really some significant zoning variance, landmarks, legal due process, and property impact, and Abutters' rights issues associated here. And I'm not sure we have time to review them all, but in the limited time, let me just hit on a few and then offer my time to others. There was, at the Abutter's meeting last night, from 6:00 to 7:30, which was the first time so many neighbors really knew what was going on. Tremendous attendance, roughly three dozen neighbors. The Neighborhood Association was there, representatives from the Councilor and State Rep's office, and the State Rep was there, John. And 100% opposition from neighbors on three affected streets, Claremont Park, Wellington, and the portion of Columbus Ave that faces into the shared alley. You may not have had an opportunity to review all those letters, because I think people need more time to digest what's going on and submit public opinion. So, you may have just been receiving some of those letters late last night and this morning. This case struck me as remarkably similar to an earlier case you were reviewing in East Boston. It's, the primary objection is regarding this proposed four-story full extension that would introduce rearwards into the alley, seven-foot-deep and four-story-high brick walls that would obstruct views, obstruct light, impact the quality of direct abutters but non-direct abutters, neighbors up and down. Would affect property value, rental value, I've already taken a hit on, I teach, so in the summer, I rent out my unit, but I haven't been able to rent it out. So, it's affecting sort of a lot of our rights and values as owners. The issues that I think other people will summarize are the impact on property value and light, obstructed view, and so on. The impact on the historic landmark of the South End, which, as was noted in the East, in the South Boston case. This is going to last for 100 years or so. The sort of hardships to the owners and the neighbors, and no real apparent hardships to the builder and the owner they represent. And some easy alternatives that I could easily speak to. Something was mentioned in a prior case and in this case about, granted that that case and this case have as of right to redistribute basically gross square footage that was a vertical, a horizontal, two-story-low extension to a vertical, full-height addition. And rights are rights, that's right. But it's important that, to recognize, as of right is not well-understood in that Abutters have rights also, and many Abutters' rights are at issue here. And like all rights, the right to speak, the right to bear arms, so on.
Sir, I just want to make sure we have time for others, so can you please get to the...
I'm sorry, I'll wrap up, but the point I'm trying to make here is that all rights exist as long as they don't infringe on the rights of others. And this plan infringes, in the many ways summarized in the many letters, on the rights of direct and indirect Abutters, including the only way to accomplish maintaining secondary means of egress on immediate Abutters left and right infringes on the properties owned by the buildings left and right. So, I do want to respect people's time, and I thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you.
Summarize the issues. Madam Chair, and I defer to others to continue the litany of objections. Thank you.
Also, I'd like to just remind people speaking on behalf or against this project, it's just for the roof deck. So, if you have any questions, concerns, or comments regarding the roof deck, please raise your hand. Thank you.
Yeah, I apologize for that. The point is, allowance of the roof deck allows for the build-out, which impacts our rights. So, it's transitive theory.
Thank you. Jessica, are you?
Stuart? Stuart, you should be allowed to speak.
This is Stuart Worrell, am I heard?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. I'm Stuart Worrell, I'm a co-owner at 12 Claremont Park, which is an abutting property. And thanks much for hearing me out. You guys have a ton to listen to, and we are one of many, and it's very important to me. With regard to the matter of the roof deck being what is before you, I want to echo what Jim has just said quickly, and then I want to give a specific example. So, the roof deck is not my immediate concern. And I understand the as-of-right issue, as Jim just stated. What I want to echo of that is that we, as Abutter Properties, we have our property rights. And the builder's right cannot be allowed to infringe on our property rights to light, space, and air. The other part I want to echo is that three dozen people attended the meeting last night. And this was a meeting because the first meeting was ill-nosed and sparsely attended, with just one or two. And with our action against this, 36 people came out, all of whom are in opposition to the rear expansion. It's a serious matter. And if I may, I'll give a specific point about that with how I see this as an infringement on my property rights. My property, which is the second level, one level above the ground in the rear, would be overshadowed and blocked in by the proposed seven-foot rear extension. For outside enjoyment, I only have a small deck, it's 10 by 8 feet. The builder wants to wall that space in entirely on one side. Furthermore, a necessary accompanying fire escape wrapped around the extension would jut out several feet at head level over my deck. So, given these concerns, I respectfully urge the Board to pause on the proposal, stop the work for now. As stated, Representatives Moran and also Councilwoman Anderson Fernandez have respectfully requested a better demonstration, a model, which clearly shows their plans, and we can fully understand this impact. And until we get clarity on that, I request a pause.
Thank you. Do I see our representative on?
Yeah, Representative Moran? You should be able to speak.
He's been unmuted, so...
Okay, can we keep going?
Jonathan Rivers?
Hey, good afternoon. Totally agree with everything James said. I'm an owner at 16 Claremont Park, Unit 3, with a deck right adjacent to the construction. There's been unapproved access and use of that deck for work. They've dropped bricks from the top floor onto the deck, which could have killed my subletter or her pet. They've taken out our emergency access for weeks, where you could have fallen off the deck for, you know, a story to your death, right? So, why should they be trusted to build something up higher if you can't manage the, you know, destruction or removal of bricks, right? So, there's damage on my deck, I have pictures of this. And, you know, there's been unauthorized use of my property as well, right? We have rights being in an Abutter, but, you know, this isn't even reasonable. So, yeah, that's all I'd like to add for, you know, the time being, but yeah, totally agree with the other comments that have been made.
Thank you.
See no additional raised hands at the moment.
Is Representative Moran still trying to speak? Okay, so we'll circle back to the applicant. Obviously, you've heard a lot of comments, so just like to... Actually, I'm sorry, Jessica, I see more raised hands. I see Representative Senator Collins' office and some other people. Can you double-check?
I believe Moran is also trying to speak, Madam Chair.
I have asked him several times.
Yeah, we're trying to, people.
Senator Collins, are you trying to speak, your office? I think you need to unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Riley Nichols from Senator Collins' office. The Senator would like to go on the record in opposition to this project and ask for it to be rejected or paused until further discussion. Thank you, guys.
We heard from Casey, so he can raise, but we need to Casey.
Hi there, I'm Casey. I just wanted to speak on behalf of some of the renters that couldn't make it, that are directly abutting 14 Claremont Park. I think a lot of people spoke at the Abutter meeting last night about property val-... about property values being affected by the seven-foot expansion. But I just wanted to give my perspective. As a renter, this seven-foot expansion is highly invasive to my back deck. As Jonathan had mentioned, they are using our property to complete this build. They haven't even started building the brick wall that will expand the perimeter of my deck yet. But it's already been highly invasive for the rent that I do pay to live in this beautiful apartment with the amenity that is the back deck. You know, it has us renters considering, can we stay here with the proposed work? We haven't seen the 3D model. We haven't really heard about the scope of work that's required to build this wall. We feel very in the dark. And, you know, I love my home. I wouldn't have re-signed my lease twice if I didn't feel that this was my home. But this is extremely invasive. It will impact my entire living space out there for, you know, maybe a year. I use my deck three seasons out of the year. And to have it be unusable, whether because of the danger that Jonathan mentioned or the invasive access to my property, you know, I'm a single woman living alone. It's a safety concern for me all around. I understand this meeting is about the roof deck, but we've all written in specifically about this expansion and kind of the secrecy over what's being done. I just wanted to represent other renters when I say that we strongly oppose this. It has already been invasive, and we're only in the early stages. And I hope that will be considered.
Thank you. We'll give one more question from Representative Moran.
I love the word that he just gave me for reaching out to the neighbors. Actually, this is Elizabeth Parker, she's eight.
You are very merciful, you are.
Um, this is Elizabeth Parker, she's eight. He just wants me to read his letter. So, it's like to the.
We really can't hear you. I don't know if you're walking. We don't know if you're walking while you're talking, but we.
I mean, it's.
Madam Chair, could they put their comments in the chat?
That's exactly what I was going to ask. I was going to suggest if Rep. Moran's aide would like to type in their comment, they should probably do that because we cannot understand what you're saying. That being said, so let's circle back to the applicant and just give him a chance to respond briefly. And then if board members have other questions before we make a motion. Thank you.
Yes, hello. My name is Joe Holland, and I'm a partner at the Holland Companies. And this is the project we are building for a client. There's... We're mixing issues here. The addition is as-of-right. It's zoning. So, you know, I did offer last night at the meeting to do a 3D model, which I will do. But that has no bearing on an already... The addition and the rest of the project is already permitted. So we're here today to discuss access to the roof deck. And that's approved every day, day in and day out in the South End, because you are not allowed to do head houses. As far as landmarks, there's been much communication with myself and landmarks. And I am in full... I have full approval from landmarks. I have full approval from ISD. And we went to a subsequent ZBA hearing for groundwater. So that is the only thing we're here to discuss today, is the access to the roof deck and not the as-of-right addition on the rear of this property. I understand that some owners object to it. I'm following the zoning rules. So a rejection today means nothing for the addition. It just holds me up on a roof deck. And I don't know how the board is going to reconcile a rejection for something like that when precedence has been set on my projects alone upwards of 25 camps. I will continue to work with the neighborhood, but I also won't be bullied.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I'm going to vote to what is in front of me, which is a relief for a building code violation for roof access in regards to egress above fourth story. I find this project to be of low occupancy. And therefore, I'm going to approve a motion... The motion is to approve the relief for the building code violation.
Is there a second?
A second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Bednarza?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes, and I feel the need to reiterate that we are voting on what is in front of us, which is a single building code violation. The vote is yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes, and I reiterate, I see plenty of evidence of roof decks on this block.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Madam Chair, that does include G-Cod as well, that motion, right?
It does not include G-Cod.
Then I need a second motion.
G-Cod was previously.
Oh, G-Cod, what was it?
If the...
Is that correct, applicant? Was it approved previously?
Yes, it was already agreed.
Okay, all right.
It was. Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we'll move on to the hearing scheduled for 1:00 PM. We start off with case BOA 1615434 with the address of 96 Standard Street. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, would they explain the case to the board, please?
Hi, Tony, are you on?
Yes, I'm on, can you hear me?
Okay, yeah, we can hear you now.
All right. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and fellow board members. My name is Anthony J. Baptiste. And we are proposing a seven-unit building... We are proposing a seven-unit building of which one unit will be an affordable unit and another unit will be a handicap-accessible unit. We were able to meet with the abutters and the neighborhood and the neighborhood associations. And we also appreciated their feedback. And we went through our process. And we greatly believe that this seven-unit, the fact that we are going to we are going to offer an affordable unit and also an accessible unit is what the city really needs. From there, I'm going to let my great architect take over to kind of go over the plans. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Derek Dackerson, context. As you can see, if you'll flip forward to the plans, the first floor plan is laid out as a Group 2 accessible unit. We heard a number of comments that while there is some accessibility in these kind of smaller, no-elevator buildings, there's very rarely a unit that's built wheelchair-accessible. And that's what Group 1, the Group 1 unit on the first floor that you see right here would be. There are also four parking spaces located on the property that would be under the building or mostly under the building in the rear. And then the levels of above are pretty straightforward. There are two beds, two baths, two per level, each of them having access to both stairs. The building would be fully sprinkled. And both units have, on the upper floor, each have a deck. So it's fairly straightforward. You see this plan here is typical of all three of the levels, Level 2 through 4. Next slide? Yeah, and then you'll see the same, a roof plan. And then the elevations of a building that, while tall, we tried to use a lot of the local vernacular to help it to fit in, even though it's going to be taller and a little bit narrower proportion than a lot of the buildings around it. That is my presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board?
Can you talk about the open space and lot area violations?
Yeah, we are short on... I don't have the numbers front me. We are required... We do have a very minimal amount of open space on the ground floor. And that's why we tried to have a deck on each level, but not a roof deck.
Mr. Hampton, are you available to elaborate on the planning department's recommendation?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Joe Hampton, City of Boston Planning Department. We are recommending denial without prejudice for this proposed project. Even under the old Mattapan zoning, which was one-family, this proposal was excessive. And with the work of the rezoning of the new Mattapan through Plan Mattapan and even the ADUs, it's still excessive. We would recommend denial without prejudice so that the opponent can go and even take a look at Plan Mattapan and see what the recommendations are. Because this new zoning district allows for a maximum of three units, which is upzoned from the one-family zoning that was in play before. We would even support the addition of an ADU in something like this. But because of the new Mattapan zoning and the work that went in to get it approved, the planning department cannot support this proposal and recommends denial without prejudice.
Thank you. Other questions from the board? Hearing none, can I have public testimony?
Madam Chair and members of the board, for the record, my name is Gerald B. Bembry. I'm the Mattapan Community Engagement Specialist for the Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant has completed the community process, which consisted of an abutters' meeting facilitated on May 14 and a civic meeting on June 13 with the River Street Civic Association. The abutters' meeting was lightly attended and concerns were voiced over the timeframe to complete the project. They then went before the civic. The civic did oppose the project and raised a number of concerns, mostly in regard to the size of the project. A few of the concerns, again, there were many. Not enough parking. The civic did request that they would like to see changes to that project and for them to return to the civic. The opponent did state he would take those considerations, those concerns into consideration, but would like to move forward with the plans that's presented for you today. Thank you for the time. And the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services would like to defer to the board for their judgment at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other raised hands?
Yep, sorry, we have a Carrie that's looking to speak. I sent a request to unmute, we'll just see it. Are you looking to give testimony, Carrie? Did I... Just check. Outside of Carrie, I have no additional raised hands. Oh, I'm sorry, I see it, Patrick. I apologize, it wasn't Patrick. Okay, some hands have been raised at this point. I'll start with Patrick.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, my name is Patrick Campbell. I'm at 95 Standard Street, right across from where this project is supposed to be put into effect. I'm against it. So, one, in this area right here where I'm at, it's all single-family. To put a seven-family unit on a corner, it's not a safe, it's not a safe project. I can understand if you're coming with a two-family or a three-family, but a seven-family unit adjacent to a Boston housing? No. That's me right there. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Dylan?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So my name is Philip. I live in 91 Standard Street, Philip Hatzler, also just across the street from the proposed building. I would also agree that with Mr. Patrick Campbell, I also have concerns or would not agree with the proposed building just because of its size and the nature of the neighborhood. There's not enough green space. I also have concerns with parkings. As Mr. Campbell mentioned, it sits right on a corner, in an uphill corner. So it's like a blind corner where already a lot of accidents have happened. With then more cars parked on the street, I think this risk will be even greater. And also, we already have issues a lot with critters around here, coyotes, rats, raccoons, everything. There's already been some calls made to Boston Animal Security here because of attacks from animals. So I think if we've built like this in a seven-unit apartment, these risks will only rise. So for that reason, yeah, I would voice my concern and not agree with the proposal.
Thank you.
Do we hear from Dylan?
Hi, yes, my name is Dylan. So I agree with this project because we need more sort of the housing in the community and in the greater Boston area. That will be a plus for us in the community and that will raise value of our home to the community. Thank you.
For the record, what is your address?
I live in the, right on the street.
Okay, thank you.
On that street in Mattapan.
Any other raised hands, Jessica?
Yes.
Hi, Dino, 104th Industry. I do support this project because I feel like it would be providing more housing. And I do like that there is affordable units available as well. Thank you, thank you.
Still have some raised hands here. AJ, Wesley? Do we hear from Carrie, or you didn't?
Hi, I'm.
Yep, AJ, go ahead.
Yeah, this is AJ. I'm over at 96 Standard. You know, we, I agree with.
Are you the project proponent? That's the address of the project.
No, I know. This is over on the 96 Standard.
Okay, I thought you said you lived there, okay.
No, 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 no. So I agree with this project because, I mean, the rent, housing prices are just astronomical these days. So it's, I've been living in the area for a long time. It's definitely much needed. I think what I heard about the handicap-accessible unit is a great addition. And, you know, I don't see any issues, to be honest with you.
Thank you. I think we got to everybody. Am I missing anyone? Wesley?
Hi, this is Carrie.
Oh, go ahead, Carrie.
Hi, I live over on 112 Standard Street, and I'm also born and raised in the area. I'm calling in support to this project. I believe it's beneficial to the community, especially with the handicap-accessible unit and the affordable housing units.
Thank you. And Wesley, I'm trying to get to you. Can you hear us? I think it might be an issue with this connectivity, but I don't know. Oh, yeah, can you hear us? Go ahead, Wesley? I don't know if you want to put your comments in the chat. We can't hear you. And I have no.
Any other questions from the board?
Hello?
We can hear you. If you cannot hear us, please put your comment in the chat. Otherwise, we'd love to hear from you.
Hello, my name is Wesley. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Oh, yes. So I'm in support of this project because I'm on 103 Standard Street. And the rent that I've been paying, it's just, you know, out of control. So I'm thinking, you know, if there's some sort of competition, the more, you know, apartments that, you know, that are being built, you know, the less, you know, rent would be for, you know, people in the area. So this is the reason why I'm in support of the project.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, is there a motion? Go ahead, Jean.
Yeah, I would, I mean, I'd like to see this project go forward, but I think it's too dense. Yeah, I, I would, I mean, I, I'd like to see this project go forward, but I think it's too dense as proposed. So I'd like to propose a, a motion of denial without prejudice and have the proponent work with the planning department to come back with a, with a project that's less dense.
Is there a second?
I will second that. I think that for the same reasons, too, sort of seeking to, too many exceptions to the code, to not know kind of where there's a, if there's a middle ground, plus the fact that there's new base zoning there. So I do second Ms. Panato's motion.
Thank you. Mr. Stambridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
I'm going to vote no.
Mr., Ms. Betterbraza?
I'm, I'm gonna vote no because I actually think it should just be a straight denial because this, the project is way too dense and I don't necessarily see a negotiation with the planning department in regards to the desires of the applicant.
Mr. Collins?
You?
Mr. Collins, are you unmuted? Yes, you are.
Yeah, sorry about that. I'm gonna vote yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Uh, yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
So with that, we'll move on to next two companion cases. The first is case BOA 1552342 with the address of 43 Hutchings Street. And along with that, we have case BOA 1552344 with the address of 43R Hutchings Street. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, would they please adjourn the case to the board?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Andrew Balbizon, Colson and Storrs. I'm the attorney for the applicant. Business address of One Post Office Square, Boston, Massachusetts. With me today from the project team is our architect, Grady Ragsdale, as well as Bridget Wallace, who's Gcode's executive director. Bit of background on the organization. The applicant is a Massachusetts non-for-profit with a mission and demonstrated history of preparing young women and non-binary people of color for work in the tech industry. The applicant has graduated nine cohorts of 350 students and many of whom have gone on to success in the tech industry. With respect to 43 and 43 Rear Hutchings Street, big-picture-wise, what we are seeking to do is to rehab the existing residential structure that fronts Hutchings Street and the existing carriage house, which is in the rear of Hutchings Street of the lot, in order to provide a state-of-the-art technical coding center with educational facilities and housing for up to 14 student applicants. So for the main house, just as a summary, and I'm gonna turn it to our architect next, we're gonna convert the main house into educational space and residential quarters, like to expand to seven bedrooms, to have the capacity for up to 14 of the program students and some educational space in the basement. For the carriage house in the rear, we'd like to convert this into an additional main building on the site with professional school and one-family detached dwelling uses. This would be comprised of a computer lab, recreational multipurpose space on the first floor, dwelling unit on the second floor, and an additional deck and dormer. Gcode also envisions allowing the multipurpose space to be accessed by the community for meetings and events. And the, what we plan to do onsite is not only to provide housing for students, but to provide coding training, as well as career advancement placement, financial literacy programs, dietary health and mental health programs, among others. Now I'll turn it to our project architect, Grady Ragsdale, to run through the actual nuts and bolts of the proposal.
Thank you for, for seeing this project. I just wanted to, if you could scroll back to the, to the beginning of, of the drawings and go to that site plan, because I do want to point out one thing on the site plan. Initially, so the rear part of this project is the carriage house. The goal is to convert that into classroom on the lower level and additional dwell, additional dwelling unit on the upper level for a program director in that space. And in order to do that, we initially thought we needed to separate this into rear lot and a front lot in order to create, you know, additional dwelling unit, not on the same lot. Things have changed. The district dwelling units now are allowable on, on the same lot. So this site plan has been altered to show, now we have a, through discussions with the, with the fire marshal, we now have a path, not previous pavers, for fire trucks, but a, a, a fire path, a lit fire path that gets back to that back, that back additional dwelling unit. And that is all by the new kind of dwelling unit guidelines. So, so that has been revised to, to help alleviate any addition, any, any issues with additional dwelling in the back. So that, site plan-wise, we're not really changing anything on the site. Existing, existing buildings, both the main building and the, and the carriage house. Again, as I mentioned, we're developing the carriage house in the classroom on the lower level, apartment on the upper level. And if you want to scroll down, I can talk a little bit about the, the plans for renovating the main house, which is, again, it's a rehabilitation. The building has kind of fallen into disrepair. There's already been a little bit of work done on it. But the idea is to, to renovate the main house into a dormitory space for 14 cohorts with, you know, co-living spaces of kitchens and bathrooms. You can kind of scroll down through there. Not a lot of major structural changes on the, on the interior. These are the demo plans. This shows you what plans or what partitions are going down, photographs of areas that are gonna get rehabilitated, and then these are the plans. First floor will have an accessible unit and then it will have an elevator added to it. So that accessible unit will be accessed from, from the ground. And then the upper floors will have bathrooms and will have, and will have seven rooms for two cohorts in each room and a kitchen on the lower level with some more support space on the lower level as well. This is that, this is that lower level. You're looking out here with the library, kitchen. So, um, really, the, the goal is to just lightly touch the inside, renovate it, get it back into shape. On the exterior, we want to get it back to its original, you know, its original look. Right now, there's aluminum siding on it, which we plan to take down and, and rehab the existing, the original, the original veneer. There's columns, you know, that need to be replaced and repaired. So the goal is to, is to get this back to the, to the, you know, the grand nature that it had when it was originally built. But this has got a new life. It's now gonna be living space for the cohorts who are going to further their education in the coding industry. So that's a brief, brief description of what's going on. I think if you scroll down, there should be also plans for that, um, plans for the, for the carriage house. They're not in here. Maybe, uh, no. Carriage house is a simple apartment on the second floor and, oh, here this, this is the carriage house here. Again, this is 43R. Again, classrooms, this is the original, the existing conditions. You scroll down, you can see, um, again, only changes to the exterior on this one is we're putting a balcony at the back for access to the apartment on the second floor. Again, these are all existing conditions. If you want to scroll through that. Demolition plans, and here you go. That's the classroom level. And the goal is to have this classroom for the, for the students, but also space for the community to use, you know, coordinate with the community to have community events in this as well. ADA bathroom. And then if you go to the next page, you'll see the, the apartment, the plan for the apartment on the upper floor. It's a two, a two-bedroom apartment, two baths and a new kitchen. So that's, that's the, that's the gist of the plans. Shall we take any questions, if anybody has any?
Can you just confirm the seven dwelling units, I mean, sorry, seven, like bedrooms? Are they existing? So there's currently six in the main house and one in the carriage house? And you're just looking?
No, the, the, the carriage house, this is a new apartment on the second, on the upper level of the carriage house. There are seven bedrooms in the, in 40, 43 Hutchings. There are seven bedrooms on the upper, well, on all three floors. Actually, it is an eight, it is an accessible unit on the first floor and then three bedrooms on the second and third floor. They're mostly, what was there existing? There are some partition changes to, to, you know, add clauses and things like that. But those seven units, those seven bedrooms are all in the, in the main, in the main building for this, for the students.
Hi, this is.
Sorry, this is Bridget Wallace, the executive director.
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Chair, sorry. Yeah, they're actually eight bedroom, it's eight bedroom. And then we'll have the additional two bedrooms in the carriage truck. So, Grady?
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank, thank you.
With respect to the variances, the project site's located in the Roxbury neighborhood, 3F7000 zoning sub-district. So we're seeking a conditional use permit for the transitional housing use and additional variances for the professional school use, dimensional requirements, including lot area, off-street parking maneuvering area, as Bob alluded to, front yard, side yard, rear setbacks, lot frontage for the rear and two or more dwelling structures in the same lot. While we acknowledge this is an increased intensity of the use for this site, throughout the process, we've aimed to work just within the existing building envelopes for each structure in order to balance functionality and meet programmatic goals. The site's bound by residential structures on all site except on Hutchings Street and the carriage house itself is fronted by the residential structure. Both structures are pre-existing. The main house was erected in 1900, but this obviously constrains the ability to build out this lot. With respect to the transitional housing use, the neighborhood does feature a number of transitional housing sites, including on Hutchings Street. However, I would note this is a much more narrow use. Here, the applicants are gonna be young students between 18 and 25 from Massachusetts who go through a rigorous application process to join the cohort. Based on past application cycles, Gcode's expecting almost 1,000 applicants to vie for these 14 spots. We believe the onsite impacts are mitigated by Gcode's student code of conduct, onsite staff supervision, and students are not granted any parking or allowed to own any cars. So we would definitely be encouraging them to use alternative modes of transit as we're situated near Columbus and Humboldt Ave. Ultimately, the goal is to provide some much-needed workforce development housing and educational space, which we think will serve the neighborhood and the larger community, hopefully for generations. Just another note on community process. The applicant has undergone extensive community process, including multiple abudders meetings, two meetings with the Garrison Trotter Neighborhood Association, and an additional community-wide meeting held on July 11th at the Pleasant Hill Missionary Baptist Church. ONS has assisted us in administering meetings with the neighborhood. They have relayed concerns to us. As a result of the community process and in accordance with the neighborhood's wishes, we are requesting a proviso from the board to limit the granting of the transitional housing and professional school uses just to the applicant. We have received the support of the Garrison Trotter Neighborhood Association, as well as Councilor Tanya Fernandez-Anderson. We've also been supported by the Office of Rep. China Tyler and Seeking State Grant Funding, which we have received in order to move the project forward. I'll pause here and have the panelists with me to answer any questions. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. So I don't know, this may be more of a comment to the staff, but the, the notice does say seven bedrooms, that's a dwelling units or something like that. That's why I was asking that question. So I don't know if that just needs to be corrected somewhere. Samantha, Caroline?
Madam Chair, looking at it now, it does say seven bedrooms. I think one of the notices is two or more dwellings in the same lot. But we do have this recording as well as the minutes that we're keeping and we can show that in the record.
Okay, thank you. Questions from the board?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I would like to ask if Mr. D'Amico is here from the Transportation Department. He's recommending to remove parking spaces number one and four, and I would like to ask him more about his, his comment. If the.
Yes. Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Bob D'Amico, BTD. Actually, one of the spaces, I think it's number four is in the front yard. And four spaces, it's just not gonna work. And even with the, with two spaces, it's not gonna be that easy. But I think that two spaces can work, but four can't for proper maneuverability. And like I said, space number four is actually in the front yard. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. D'Amico.
Thank you. Other questions from the board?
I just didn't see, Madam Chair, I didn't see a APDA recommendation on this. Am I just missing that or is Jeff here to speak to?
I think.
No, it was, it was, it was added later approval.
They're recommending approval.
Okay, thank you. Most of us.
Yeah, it was in a later version. Um, other questions from the board? Here none. May I have public testimony?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. For the record, my name is Austin Janey and I am the Roxbury Liaison from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant has completed the community process, which consisted of an abudders meeting on March 19th and a civic meeting on April 14th with Garrison Trotter. Abudders voiced many concerns. Some of the concerns are regarding density, parking, zoning changes from residential to commercial, liens on the property. We also received a 67 signature petition in opposition, as well as 13 letters opposing, which are from immediate abudders. We also received a verbal opposition from State Rep. Chris Worrell. And so they have, and with that being said, we would like to defer to the board for their judgment at the time. Thank you.
Do you have an office? You hear me? Yep.
Yes.
Hello, members of the board, President. My name is Angie. I'm representing the District 7 office. I would like to go on record on behalf of Councilor Anderson and read the letter. She says, "I proudly submit this letter in strong support of the enterprising and impactful work taken on by Gcode at their proposed site, 43 Hutchings Street. Our office received correspondence from residents, advocates, community leaders, abudders, and nonprofits, organizations, all whom offered their enthusiastic support for this program and its location on Hutchings Street. Gcode represents an exciting and inspiring opportunity to invest in young women in pursuit of financial and professional self-development. We know all too well that Boston's emerging tech industry needs more, and needs to more intentionally involve women, particularly women of color, and Gcode, if given the opportunity, can close this gap. Councilor wants to go on record to clarify some misconceptions about this proposal, which have been brought to the attention of the office. Councilor says, 'Let me be clear. This facility is neither zoned for nor intends to be used as a halfway house, a sober home, or any other facility beyond its stated purpose of providing an invaluable opportunity for young women to gain access to an industry which too often excludes women, particularly women of color. And while a few residents have come forward with concerns about the building's use, fueled by the misconception that this facility would be used as some sort of halfway house, the overwhelming majority of residents recognize the value that Gcode offers, not just to their participants, but to the community at large. To lose this opportunity would represent a major setback for the community, and the Councilor urges you to vote favorably on behalf of Gcode. Thank you so much."
Coming to you now?
Yes, I am Patti Alucic. I'm an architect and a great supporter of Gcode. And since I learned about this opportunity and Gcode, I've been following everything that organization has been doing. And this is the most, what Gcode is doing from not just young women of color, it's doing a lot of things for neighborhood as well. This is the most effective way to go against gentrification, keeping local residents and people in need, and also showing our commitment and their commitment to empowering diversity and inclusivity in the tech force and in our neighborhoods. So I think going against this organization is just going against education, diversity, and inclusivity.
Thank you. And what's your address for the record? And what's your address for the record?
Ten seventy Beacon Street, three D Brookline.
Thank you.
Mo?
Hello, hello, Madam Chair and members of the board. I'm Mo and I represent the constituents of Hutchings Street neighbors. Many have their hands raised right now and we are the sixty-seven petitioners, including myself, who oppose the proposed zoning changes for forty-three dash forty-three R Hutchings. Over half of us are homeowners. We are all taxpayers and voters who want to preserve the residential family-oriented integrity and cohesion of our wonderful street. Where the more the Garrison Trotter Neighborhood Association vote does not represent direct abutters who reside in Hutchings Street. On the contrary, the majority of Hutchings Street residents actually oppose this project, but were not able to vote because Garrison Trotter changed their meeting date and required payment to vote. I would like to note that the compliance with the ZBA process was not adhered to regarding forty-three as many abutters did not receive mandatory notice of the March of Butters Meeting with the City of Boston. And just to note, just according to the Bay State Banner, over ninety percent of transitional housing locations in Boston are located directly in our neighborhood of Roxbury. The proposed spot zoning changes in the middle of our block would be detrimental to our community fabric and stability. To support this would set a precedent for future developments to disrupt family neighborhood blocks like ours. Our community is being disproportionately targeted with anti-family developments. Lastly, we strongly urge the board to hear and consider the many, many sixty-seven petitioners' voices of Hutchings Street and reject the proposed variances in zoning changes for forty-three dash forty-three R. Thank you.
Thank you. Marilyn, am I?
Good afternoon and thank you for this opportunity to speak. This is Marilyn Chase, Riverside, at forty-seven Hutchings Street, which is a direct abutter. I first want to say I concur with the previous speaker and all of her remarks. I would note that we have lived at forty-seven, have been owners at forty-seven for forty-five years. I am a retired human services professional. I retired as Assistant Secretary for Health and Human Services for the Commonwealth. And in the early eighties, as, on behalf of the Roxbury Multi-Service Center, I actually opened the first residential program, the Shelter for Families, in Roxbury. I know from experience what it takes to run a residential program. I have had conversations with the, the director, the Executive Director of G code, who is also the owner of the properties, regarding what her plans are for management of this project, understanding how complicated it is, both in terms of management of a residential program and in terms of financing a nonprofit in this day and age. And I have not been convinced or nor am I comfortable with the ability to successfully manage in the long term the kind of non, the nonprofit that's being proposed here. And while the owner may have significant experience working with individuals to develop their skill, she has no experience running a residential program for young women, and particularly for fourteen young women. I'm concerned that our community is once again, or our street, is being asked to sacrifice the stability of our street for the greater good of select individuals once again. As Mo noted earlier, our community has been imposed upon insignificant numbers in ways that we have not had an opportunity to have influence. And I would hope that the board would give the same consideration to the residents of Hutchings Street as they gave to the residents of the South End. The consequence of this project on our street is much more significant and as lasting as the impact of adding a deck in the South End. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Okay, you have a few raised hands. Ali?
Let's just be, be quick because I know there are a lot of people and we did receive a lot of comments. So, let's.
Okay. Tanisha, Maddie, either one of you.
Hello? This is Ali, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. I'd like to say my name is Ali Austin Newby, I reside at thirty-seven Hutchings Street. I'm retired Boston Public School High School Guidance Counselor. So, I have lots of experience in regard to online courses. And I would say that in favor of G code, their success has been because they have been an online program. They do not offer any courses that they create themselves. The courses they offer are free and online. You and I can access these courses through Coursera, Udemy, Code Academy, and Khan Academy. These are totally free courses that anyone can access. G code has set itself up as a middleman to present the liberal services for courses that are already free. And the courses are unlicensed and uncertified. So, it's not true that these courses are leading young women into the field of technology, okay? That's why if you go to G code's website, it says they have experienced instructors, which is code for unlicensed and uncertified, which means when these young ladies graduate, if you want to call it that, they are only able to receive a certificate. So, the program is good in an online form, but why should we take the risk of taking an online course platform and then trying to transfer it into a dormitory with no previous experience of success? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you want me to keep going? We have a few more of these hands.
Yes, let's just be brief.
Okay. Maddie, did we hear from you?
Uh, no, you haven't yet, but I would like to speak now. I wanted to address some of the previous comments. So, my name is Maddie Wallace. Oh, can you hear me?
Go ahead, yeah, name and, name and address, please.
Yes, I'm getting to that. My name is Madison Wallace. I'm a resident of forty-three Hutchings Street. I'm also Bridget Wallace's daughter. I am graduated from Northeastern University. I have been living in this neighborhood and frequenting there since, for my entire life. And so, I wanted to address some of the concerns, which I notice have little to do with zoning, mostly have to do with personal vendettas or just honest disinformation and misinformation of things that have been spread. So, some of the things that have been spoken about, I find concerning that they are just baseless and groundless. So, one of those being that the courses are middle ground. These are courses you can find on Coursera. Unfortunately, you cannot middleman community. But when I was at Northeastern and I was a business student and I had nobody else in my classes that looked like me, I had to seek community. I had to seek additional programs like G code. So, one was named MLT where I was able to have other black and brown students to pursue careers in tech like I did. And that really was the foundation of this idea, was that I was able to get into tech through an alternative path. I would have had no opportunity to do so considering my experience was in fashion. But because of this specific program that I had access to, that I was lucky enough to get accepted to, I was able to do that and it totally changed my trajectory and ability to.
Ma'am, can you please get to your point? Because obviously, you're supporting your mother, so.
Yeah, the point, yeah, I mean, I'm supporting regardless. But I just wanted to address the misinformation, which is that multiple liens is false and that G code is a middleman, middle ground, that's false. And that there's no previous, that there's no previous experience there, that's false as well. This, my mom has had experience doing this before. So, I think support should be considered based on what's actually out there. We were, there was an interview with CBS that you guys can access. And to learn the real information behind it, I would urge the board to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Jessica, are there other raised hands? From a but.
Yeah, yeah. Then if you're in a but, Tanisha, are you?
Uh, yes. Hello, everyone. My name is Tanisha. I'm a resident at thirty-five Mazing Street. And I'm someone whose life has been directly touched by G code in more than one way. I joined the program last spring at a point in my life where I was really seeking change and wanting to pivot my career in a different direction. And G code provided me with the opportunity to study how to build websites completely free. It's a program specifically made for Black, Brown, and Indigenous women and non-binary people to have a space where they can not only learn, but thrive. Not only did we have lessons every week, but we were also given projects to develop our professional portfolio and attended workshops on how we can market ourselves to find the job that we want. The thing that stuck with me the most was the community that G code is able to forge. I was surrounded by other people who looked like me, other women who I could identify with, were going through the same things I was. As someone who finds it very difficult to ask for help when I need it, I always felt like the team and staff were looking out for me and were always there to help if I needed it. After completing the program, I was fortunate enough to join the amazing team that G code has, which allows me to work directly with the community that I was once a part of, encouraging and helping our fellows when they need it. G code has had an immense impact on my life. It's provided me with the essential technical skills, a supportive network, and the confidence to pursue my career goals. This program is more than just an educational opportunity. It's a lifeline for many individuals like myself who are looking for a way to break into the tech industry but face barriers. The renovation of forty-three Hutchings Street will give many young women of color based in Boston the opportunity to really change their lives. With a dedicated space for learning and growth, G code can expand its reach and provide even more resources and support to those who need it most. This new co-living space would empower these women to gain valuable skills, overcome obstacles, and achieve their full potential. So, I wholeheartedly support G code and its mission to create more inclusive and diverse, diverse communities by offering invaluable resources and support to those who need it most. Thank you for considering my testimony.
Chair, we have a few more. Five more raised hands. Do you want me to keep going?
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, let's just try to be brief as we'd like people to have an opportunity to speak.
Okay. Baby?
Sure. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Great. So, I'm Managing Director of G code and I'm thrilled to support this project, which.
I'm sorry to pause you. Can we let the public speak and then we will turn it over to the applicant? And, you know, anyone, including yourself from the applicant's team?
Sure.
So, let's, yeah, thank you.
There we are.
Jessica, can you keep going? So, if you're with the team, just, just wait and we'll keep, we'll get to you.
Okay, I don't see. Can you raise your hand again if you're looking to give testimony for this proposal? I don't see any additional raised. Okay, Kristi. Kristina?
Yeah.
Can you hear me? Yes.
Okay, thank you. I would just like to clarify that this property has been unoccupied since its purchase in two thousand and fifteen. There was just a comment saying that Maddie lives at forty-three Hutchings Street. I'm not sure if that was her intent, but that is simply not true.
Okay, where do you live?
I live at thirty-nine Hutchings Street. I'm a direct abutter.
Well, we have a house in the area, that's what Maddie was referring to. So, there, I can address you.
And what is that address?
No, we won't give you our other family's address, but I can assure you that we have homes in the area. Thank you.
Okay, so let's focus. Yeah, go ahead, Samantha.
No, no, you, you were, you were saying that up here.
I, I was trying to let the, the butters finish before we turn back.
I'll keep this brief. I believe Carol would like to speak next. The community simply will no longer stand on the sidelines and accept the will of developers seeking to take advantage of our neighborhoods. There are no circumstances in which we will support spot zoning for additional transitional housing in our neighborhood. G code and this proposed development are completely unrelated. This is a private property and we do not want our neighborhood zoned to be anything other than what it is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Don't see, I don't see any additional raised hands at the moment.
She said Carol had her hands raised. Carol, can you?
I don't. Carol, if you're looking to speak and you raise a hand, I don't see the.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you now.
Okay. So, my name is Carol Noe and I live at thirty-five Hutchings Street. I'm a direct abutter. And thank you for allowing me this opportunity to express my experience with this person. My family's lived on this property for more than sixty years. So, we've been here for a long time and we've seen a lot of changes. I'm going to just get right into it. I would like to emphasize to the zoning board my experience of financial abuse and physical assault by Bridget Wallace. Based on my experience with this individual, I would say this is not a conventional business person. On the front end, she has proven to be a person willing to break financial rules, entitled herself to creative work products, falsifying her actions to induce and mislead her own daughter to incite violence against me, and benefiting from homeowner tax exemption on a vacant building for the last nine years. A track record like this leaves it impossible to predict what type of complications that might arise under this person's leadership, managing fourteen impressionable young women. The lack of accountability exhibited by this individual should make it illegal for this person to operate in a residential neighborhood. I'm going to emphasize residential, not commercial. That has gone through this, we've gone through decades of marginalized policies and business dealings that have contributed to generational harm and stagnation. As human beings, we deserve to be treated with dignity and respect. And I am one of the lien holders and that's what I'm seeking. Recovery of bodies that have been taken. Thank you.
When, Andrew, do you want to say something before I jump in?
Is there, are there any other, is there any other public comments before we turn it back to the applicant?
Um, I see no raised hands at the moment.
Okay, thank, thank you, sorry. Ms. Wallace, if you would like to adjust concerns?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to respond to a few points and also turn it to Bridget afterward. With respect to property neglect, there is no infestation on the property apparent. We have not had any violations from ISD whatsoever since Bridget has owned the property. With respect to any outstanding legal issues, there's a dispute that Bridget is in. It's a private dispute relating to purchase of the property. That's a separate legal process that's proceeding to trial in October. So, we, we don't think that has any bearing on the zoning relief that G code as an organization, which is the applicant, is seeking. And so, just, just to get ahead of this, too, with respect to any concerns about conflicts of interest, G code is a Massachusetts charitable corporation. It has a governing board. It has corporate documents which comply with Massachusetts law. G code is entered into a ground lease at arm's length for the property. Careful consideration has always been given to delineating the rights and roles of the organization with, you know, the balancing the rights and roles of the organization with Bridget as a landlord. And I'll just turn it to Bridget to respond to any other specifics.
Um, sure, and I, I also, BB's hand is up. I just wanted to clarify a couple of things. Um, as far as my, or I don't want to say my, because again, I'm the Executive Director and so, as Andrew mentioned, that this is governed by a board made up of very distinguished members of the community, from State Street to participants who work at Google, all in, many in the tech space, to Mass Challenge, to a number of folks. So, they've been properly, they hold that role and are accountable to that role and I'm accountable to them. In terms of my background and it carries any bearing on this, I'm an urban planner from Tufts. I've worked in Roxbury for the better part of thirty-plus years. I was there when they wrote the original Roxbury Master Plan. I've been on a number of IAGs. I've sat on a number of parcel dispositions from Dream Collaborative to Cruise, to a number of them. So, I have been working as part of this neighborhood for many years. I've also, my background with young women, I worked with young women who were adjudicated to Department of Youth Services. They were locked up in facilities across the state and I've worked with them for over five-plus years. My initial proposal coming out of MIT Fellows Program was to design a after-care facility for young women who were adjudicated to DYS and leaving DYS upon their eighteenth birthday. So, this is, this project has been close to me. But it was really my daughter who was really the impetus behind the opportunities that she was presented with in order to go into tech that I, and the community that she had behind her that we wanted to extend to, to other folks. So, as far as that is concerned, again, I, I have ample expertise. I've worked in, for the state for five years for the Department of Housing and Community Development. I've worked in, for the state for five years for the Department of Housing and Community Development uh under the now um the new chief um that's under um Sheila Dillon, who was in Detroit. I worked uh with him uh for the DHCD. I worked in mental public health for a number of years for the city. And we were just contacted by the city today to partner again under their housing lab around co-living. This is not transitional living. That is just the use that we have to use uh for this. As far as the zoning board is concerned and any concerns about an individual throwing mudslinging and throwing issues that mean this individual was actually part of this process uh initially. But because of their behavior, they are no longer a part of uh this project. So they were offering their house up, which is the individual at thirty five Hutchings Street, to be a Gcode site. But because they are no longer part of this, this has become personal. So that is what I will say to that and I will not, you know, act in kind and, and throw mud back in the other direction as I can because there's, there's plenty there to do. This issue is about these young women and the opportunities that they will be presented. Boston or Boston and particularly Massachusetts is one of the most expensive places to live. And we are trying to provide housing, education, and support so that young women can live, learn, and work in this community. And so we humbly ask for your support. I'll quickly turn it over to uh BB, uh who is our managing director. Thank you.
Thank you, BB. Just, just uh try to wrap it up for us. Thank you.
Yeah, so, so I, I, I wanted to just say that, you know, my name is Bridgette Brown. I'm the uh managing director of Gcode and a longtime resident of Dorchester and Roxbury. Um, my experience includes uh communications, uh community involvement, community engagement, and all of that. So I'm thrilled to support the renovation of forty three Hutchings Street. This is a project that's vital to our mission and, you know, I am excited that, you know, we have been doing this for so long. Um, and, and that work is empowering Black, Brown, and Indigenous women and non-binary people of color in tech. And we have a lot of graduates who've gone on to the tech sector in Boston and we're, you know, contributing to that tech sector. So one of our partnerships is really helping to grow, involves helping to grow the, you know, the diversity within the tech sector. At the same time, you know, we want to renovate forty three Hutchings Street into a co-living space that will provide like a state-of-the-art, uh state-of-the-art classrooms, uh labs, and increase our capacity to serve our residents who are, you know, Boston and greater Boston uh young women who want a tech career. I've had twenty years of experience working in the tech and communication sector and I know how hard it is to uh really kind of hone your skills and land a job. And so Gcode is the organization that's helping us do that. So therefore, it's like a forewinner in this process. This space is not just going to be a, you know, speaking for Gcode, but it's gonna be a community hub that's going to offer events and workshops to the community. It's gonna promote engagement and cohesion with the community. We've also invited community members to be a part of the structuring of this space and the organization of this space. We want community members to be on the advisory board. We want community members to review the applicants who are coming into this program. We've extended that invitation to the community members, although they haven't mentioned this on this call, but we have and we intend to continue to do that, to have the community involved. This is a project that is really going to benefit not just, you know, Boston.
Yeah, Boston.
Well, lastly, I wanna say, we're not developers. We're residents of Boston seeking to support our participants who are members of our community. Young Black women who wanna go into the communications or, you know, uh, the tech sector, which is something that I have, you know, kind of entered in my last twenty years and I know how difficult it was for me. So I wanna be a mentor and to help to usher that in. And I've been doing that with our, you know, our previous cohort, which consisted of about fifty students who went through this program. So it's really kind of continuing the work that many of us have been doing. Black, Brown women who aspire to be tech professionals. So that's what we want to do and it means taking up space in our community and, and advocating for our community, advocating for the next generation of people. So we're not developers, we're residents of Boston seeking to support uh young Black, Brown, and Indigenous women who are in our community. We have broad support from individuals, foundations, including uh support from the governor.
Uh, did she mute herself or did someone mute her?
Yeah, she may have, she may have been, uh, she may have dropped the call. I just wanted to say quickly to.
I'm sorry, yeah, so, so I, but, but, we're not the developers. We're not developers. We're residents of Boston seeking to support uh younger uh Black, Brown, and Indigenous women who live in Boston, who wanna enter the tech field. We have broad support from individuals and also support from the state and from the city and from our partners. And, you know, we would like to move forward with this, this project and I wanna make clear that this is not a transitional housing, uh, you know, request. This is a request to create co-living, which the city is also exploring and, you know, is interested in talking to us about. And it's also, and through the co-living experience, we're going to improve our communities. We're going to transform our community. We're going to have more people who are qualified to go into the tech sector and build it up and increase the number from two percent of women of color working in the tech sector to like ten percent. So that, that, that's my testimonial and I thank you all for, um, you know, for the opportunity to, you know, provide it.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other questions from the board? So I just wanted to be cognizant, we are losing a board member after this case and so, or shortly. So uh, any questions from the board? Okay, hearing none. Uh, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazo?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Uh, no.
Mr. Aiken? Is Mr. Aiken?
Sorry, yes. Yes, I am.
Are you voting yes or are you saying, or?
Both, yes, yes to both.
Thank you. Ms. Panado?
Yes.
The chair votes no, but the motion carries.
Excuse me.
I'm much.
May I speak?
Uh, we're done with this case, unfortunately.
Is this process not to support the community members whom it affects the most? We have sixty-seven petitioners that live on this street.
I would invite, I would invite you to please connect with the ISB staff. Unfortunately, we've, uh, the, the board has voted. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Forward.
Thank you. Much appreciated.
Our next and last case to debate is case B O A one five eight seven eight eight three with the address of forty Elmont Street. If the applicant and or their, and or their representative are present, would they please explain the case to the board?
Hi, can you raise your hand if you're onto this proposal, forty Elmont? I don't see any raised hands at the moment.
Okay.
Raised hand, Carlos Ferrera. Jessica, can you unmute him? I can't from the computer.
Okay.
Carlos, yep.
And we're losing a second board member in about twenty minutes. So let's um see what we can do.
All right, this, this, this will be, my name is, is Bill Mohan. I'm a licensing consultant working with Carlos on this project. Uh, this project came before the board, your board, uh, in two thousand and three. It was, it was passed by the ZBA. Uh, it was approved by the BPDA. Uh, and then uh, in meeting with, with neighbors and, and uh, uh, looking at, at what we had, it really amounted to uh down to a, a, a two-bedroom apartment and a one-bedroom apartment. And in meeting with, with the neighborhood associations, they said, well, we like, we like families here. You know, we don't like single apartments. And so is there a way we can get a second, second basement, make it two, two-bedroom, two-bath apartments? We said, well, the only space that's available to do that is the basement. He goes, well, we really don't approve a, a basement, but we, we talked about different options and they talked about maybe on the first floor, put the bedrooms and, and put the kitchen and everything else in, in the basement. And, and we, we didn't like this. No, that's, that's not never, never a good idea to have open flame in a, in a, in a basement, uh, gas or anything like that. So we, we started again with, with the association. We went back to them on, and we met again on, on, on June twelfth. Uh, and we presented our plan and they said, well, uh, we would rather have you put in the, the changes to the basement, which included a full bath, full shower, a second egress, uh, and, and done right, than be faced with a possible situ- situation of somebody moving in to a one-bedroom apartment and suddenly you've gotta have a dozen mattresses on the floor of the basement with none of the uh improvements that we made. And so they, they approved what we were doing and there should be a letter in your folder attesting to that. Uh, and, uh, because that was sent, uh, that was sent to Stephanie directly. Uh, and so we have, we have listened and listened and worked with the neighborhood. Uh, the exterior of the, of the, uh, the, the building that you approved hasn't changed at all. Uh, it includes two parking spaces off, uh, off the street. Uh, and it'd be two, two-bedroom, two-bath uh apartments. Uh, and it was, they were, they are apartments. They're not gonna be condos. They're apartments. Uh, and, and the neighborhood is very, very happy with that. And so that's, that's what we're presenting to you today. Hope you can agree.
Questions from the board?
Yeah, for Jeff Hampton, uh, the planning department, if we have a recommendation from, from his office?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Valencia. No, this is the first time we're seeing these plans, so I couldn't offer one. I did see the plans from two thousand and twenty-three and as the appellant said, we did recommend approval. But when it comes to putting a bedroom with a full bath, I'd love to be able to take a look at especially the ceiling heights down there where we get the living space. But this is all that we, this is the first time that we've been seeing these plans.
Both, both floors of the house, uh, like all the floors of the house, they have like nine-foot ceilings, including the basement. Uh, so there is adequate height in the basement for it. And the area that we have on the back of the building, uh, is hard for me to show, but the back is like where we have the balconies. There was a window well that was built and there's like a full door over there for egress and, uh, and light for the basement.
And we showed, as we said, we showed this to the neighborhood association and they agreed. That's what they, they, they wanted to see those kinds of, of plans.
Yeah, the only issue I see is just really a lack of air and light. You know, looking at your foundation wall in the basement and there's absolutely no opening at all.
It's, it's a gold back.
Only, only to the bedroom, um, there's these kind of foldable doors to kind of a it seems like it's a submerged kind of.
Yeah, it's a, it's a folding, it's a folding sliding door. There's about tensioned light.
Yeah, but you're still underneath, you're still underneath a porch, you know, a deck. So there's, there's absolutely no light and air coming in. Um, what's the height of when you're outside of that bedroom to grade? You know, can you, you know, do you need a ladder to get out of it?
You're gonna have, we're gonna need a ladder to get out of it.
Yep.
It's about six feet to, to get to the grade.
Yeah, so that, the only thing I'm seeing is that you really have absolutely no light and air other than a little bit of light coming down from the, the opening that is framed from, you know, the deck underneath.
Is this an issue, issue we could discuss with BPDA?
Um.
Well, to be honest with you, I wouldn't wanna discuss anything that nobody has seen and unshot me.
Yeah.
So.
Right, so I think.
If we had made a recommendation, I'd feel different about it, but this is the first time.
Yeah. I, I, I don't have any further questions.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Can I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board, for the record, my name is Jeremy Bembry. I'm the Mid-Dorchester Community Engagement Specialist for the Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant has completed the community process. Our office agreed a full community process was not necessary and the community was notified via flyer. We received no community response to the notification. Uh, the opponent went on to present to Noble Harvard Civic, who did not fully support the project, uh, but they did allow it to move forward as they stated they would not want to hold up the process. Uh, we have received no letters of support or opposition at this time. Thank you for your time. The mayor's office of neighborhood public will like to defer to the board for their judgment at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sure I have no raised hands at the moment.
Okay, uh, any other questions from the board? With that, may I have a motion?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second? Second, I'm sorry. Second, okay, thank you. Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazo?
I'm gonna vote no, just simply because there's absolutely no window openings at all into the habitable room that they're proposing.
Okay, Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Madam Chair, the date would be September twenty-fourth.
Okay, the applicant received that, September twenty-fourth.
September twenty-fourth, thank you very much.
The defer is really to provide the Austin Planning Department opportunity to make a recommendation, so that should be noted.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
All right, thank you everyone for your patience.
Ooh, this was a long one.
See you next time.